So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special organizational meeting of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And at this time, I'd like to welcome our new members to the school committee, Shannon Poole and Jamie Winters. I'd also like to welcome back Member Laura Kirshenbaum and Member Carla Ottmar. I'd also like to announce that we do have members participating remotely.
Sue Valentine was, but I don't see her on the screen.
So, we'll have Member Valentine, who's participating remotely, and therefore, any and all votes will be by roll call. I'm going to briefly explain the process to elect the next school committee chair and vice chair. What I'd like you to know, these elections are conducted by paper ballot, which are to be signed by members and will be included in the public record. For the information of the new members of the school committee, as well as the public, I'm going to read aloud two sections from the WRSD bylaws, Section 2 and Section 3, which read as follows. Section 2, Organizational Meeting. The Wachusett Regional School District Committee shall, in accordance with Section 13 of the amended regional agreement, organize and elect a chair and a vice chair, and if the offices are vacant, a secretary and treasurer. The chair and vice chair shall be members of the committee. The committee shall elect a chair and vice chair by paper ballot from its membership in accordance with Chapter 71, Section 16A of the Massachusetts General Laws. The secretary and treasurer may or may not be members of the committee, and if not, may be reimbursed for this work. The organizational meeting shall be posted at least 14 days in advance, which we did comply with. Section 3, Chair/Vice Chair. No member may be elected as the chair of the committee unless said member has service on the committee for at least two years prior to assuming the office of the chair. No member may be elected as vice chair of the committee unless said members have served on the committee for at least two years prior to assuming the office of the vice chair. The offices of chair and vice chair shall be for a term of one year, and they may not succeed themselves more than three additional times. Should the chair be unable to complete the one-year term of office, the vice chair shall assume all duties and responsibilities of the chair to the completion of the one-year term. Should the vice chair be unable to complete the one-year term of office, for reasons including being elevated to the position of chair, then the committee, at its next regular meeting, shall elect a vice chair. Should the chair and vice chair vacate the positions simultaneously, the committee, at its next regular meeting, shall elect a chair and vice chair to serve the balance of the one-year term. The full version of the WRSTC bylaws can be found on the district website, if anyone is interested in looking at them further. You should, in all of your red folders, be able to find ballots. The first round of voting is for the chair, and those will be written on the pink pieces of paper, and then submitted back to me to be read aloud. At this time, I'd like to accept nominations for the position of chair. Member Haber.
I'd like to nominate Member Runstrom. He has served on the committee for two years now, so he qualifies. He has also served as chair in Paxton Board of Selectmen, familiar with Robert's Rules, familiar with our committee practices. I think that he's organized and has a good work ethic, which is certainly needed, and his calm demeanor, I think, would be an asset as chair.
Second? Do we need a second?
Seconds are not needed.
Not needed.
But, thank you.
Member.
I would like to nominate Member Linda Long Bell, who is, well, I have experience working with as a chair of the education subcommittee. And, well, in my opinion, regardless of our possible disagreements on specific issues, I think she organized the work of that subcommittee very well, and it would be great to see her as the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Member.
So, I want to clarify, you're talking about the education subcommittee, George, or the social?
I'm talking about the nomination for the big committee.
Chair.
Okay, well, I'm very grateful for your nomination, but I would respectfully decline, simply because with the demands of my full-time job and any number of other reasons, I feel that it's not the right time for me to assume that position. But I'm very grateful, thank you.
Member, committee.
Well, I understand, but still, I believe it was a proper thing for me to do this in order to recognize.
Oh, well, thank you.
Would the body like to entertain any additional nominations? So, at this time, what I'd ask you to do is go into your folder, pull out your, I believe it was red paper, and if you can, pink, excuse me, thank you very much, and select your candidate for chair of the school committee, and if you could pass when you're finished, the paper down to me. Thank you.
A point of qualification. So, when we only have one nominated candidate, what are the options?
You could abstain, or you could write the committee the member's name on the piece of paper.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can I correct mine? Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry.
You would be honored. So, for the record, I was just going to read all the ballots. Ms. Jacobs, you all set? Excuse me. Member Woodland votes for Scott Runstrom. Member Winters votes for Scott Runstrom. Member Beardmore votes for Scott Runstrom. Member Dubois votes for Scott, member Runstrom. Member Kaminsky abstains. Member Gustafson selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Kirshenbaum selects member Scott Runstrom. Member Poole selects candidate, member Runstrom. Member Brennan selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Sam Garrett selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Long Belial selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Haber selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Runstrom selects candidate Scott Runstrom. Member Goodvarden selects candidate Scott Runstrom. So, the choice of the committee is the next chair of our school committee?
It's Member Valentine.
Oh, I apologize. Member Valentine, would you like to submit a vote?
Yes, I would. For Scott Runstrom, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the omission. So, thank you to the committee. Congratulations, the next chair is candidate Scott Runstrom. Although I'd like to pass on the gavel, I can, can I? So, at this time, we were going to go through the same process, and at this time, select or entertain motions or nominations for the position of vice chair. Yes, Member Woodland?
I would nominate Member Sherri Haber. She did a phenomenal job as a chair last year and knows the job very well, decided out, and so would be a good person to have in the chair and to fill the position.
Are there any other nominees the committee would like to entertain at this time?
Second?
We're okay if we don't. It's okay. Seeing none, I'll ask everyone if they can take out their yellow piece of paper and vote. In this case, you can either abstain or vote for Member Haber. Member Gustafson, Sherri Haber. Member Poole, Sherri Haber. Member Brennan, Sherri Haber. Member Sam Garrett, Sherri Haber. Member Woodland, Sherri Haber. Member Kirshenbaum, Sherri Haber. Member Long Belial, Sherri Haber. Member Beardmore, Sherri Haber. Member Dubois, Sherri Haber. Member Winters, Sherri Haber. Member Kaminsky, abstain. Member Goodvarden, Sherri Haber. Member Haber, Sherri Haber. Member Runstrom, Sherri Haber. So, I'd like to congratulate. Oh, I did it again. My apologies. I'm sorry.
That's all right. My vote for Sherri Haber, she did a phenomenal job, and thank you, Sherri, for stepping up to be vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize again, Sue.
No worries.
Congratulations, Sherri Haber.
We need a five-minute recess for we need to reset the votes.
Okay, and so.
We adjourn this meeting.
Well, we can adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Second?
Thankfully accepted. I believe, do we have to do a roll call vote?
Yeah.
And do we want Sue to start us off? Sue?
Valentine, yeah.
Just wait one second, please.
Do we want Randy to call the roll?
Sure.
She will definitely at the next meeting. I think everybody's going to vote to chair and I.
Can I do that, or?
You can, if you'd like.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member Dubois?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Dubois?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
Member Runstrom?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yeah.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Goodvarden?
Yes.
So, we adjourned for about a five-minute recess?
We're going to get set up for the meeting.
Thank you all.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to call to order regular meeting number 1394 of the Wachusett Regional School Committee. It's Wednesday, May 17, 2023, and this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Rutland Cable. So, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda today is public hearing. We do have one person signed up for public hearing, Heather Erickson.
Mackenzie Erickson.
Heather Mackenzie Erickson.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a microphone?
Well, the room is miked around you. You are welcome.
Yeah, I think, sit at the table, that's fine.
Sure, thank you. Mackenzie, Heather, Heather Mackenzie Erickson from Holden. I come to you as a mom of two elementary kids in Mayo Elementary. Just wanted to get a chance to read the letter that I wrote. "Are we grooming our own shooters?" Open letter to Holden. "Mom, today we had to evacuate the classroom because Johnny wouldn't listen to the teacher or the principal. Imagine hearing that from your fourth grader bouncing off the bus one afternoon. My heart skipped a beat. I first felt extremely defensive of my daughter, but being a parent is a double-edged sword. I'm an example here, so I had to collect myself before the onslaught of questions I asked her. This has been a carefully curated conversation between my children and I. Some of it shouldn't even be a concern to them because the adults have work to do. I moved here in hopes of putting them in a highly regarded school system. Was it a mistake? This school year has been the toughest so far. By the second quarter into the school year, I have been hearing daily stories of one peculiar student who was abruptly transferred into my daughter's classroom, seemingly kicked out of his original classroom. By the time this peak event happened, I was angered by the fact that my child, along with the rest of the classroom, was being conditioned to tolerate his threatening behavior and constant disruptions as standard daily life in school. My child shrugged. She lamented that she couldn't do anything anyway. She was complacent and wasn't taken back by the gravity of what happened because it was a daily occurrence. If that isn't desensitizing at its finest, then we have deeply lost our way. Every day, little by little, today Johnny kept repeating testicles in class. The teacher had to tell him that he cannot say it, the word, out loud, but only in his head. Today Johnny kept pulling his chair in and out because he thought the screech it made was funny. He wouldn't stop. During lunch, the helper teacher put tennis balls on the feet of his chair, but when he found them, he ripped them off and threw them across the room, yelling several times, "I hate these." Today Johnny stood in front of the group of desks. It scared us, so he wouldn't look at them. He threatened that he wouldn't go away until someone looked at him. Today Johnny shoved a chair into another classmate but missed, and he said, "Oh, I'll get you next time." Today Johnny held up a pencil like he was going to stab anyone who got close. He made an evil face. Today Johnny yelled at the teacher because he didn't know what pencil to use. Mom, Johnny is getting really annoying. He keeps blurting out words, and the teacher has to stop teaching and drags everything out. These are real accounts from my child, none of which were shared with me or the other parents from the school or from the teacher. We like to idealize the outage it takes a village, but that can't functionally happen with today's privacy laws. The safety of our children while in the school is shrouded in secrecy. At the same time, we relinquish the privacy all day long, the moment we pick up a phone or step into public. The school is public. How can I support my daughter's education about the rights and safety, about her rights and safety, if I have no clue as to what's actually happening in school? Johnny was transferred out of his original classroom because of this behavior. I feel compassion towards him because he clearly needs extreme guidance from a dedicated professional. Why isn't he better guided? I thought it was the law. While I feel sorry for him, I won't let it be at the expense of my daughter's education and safety. My child shouldn't feel fearful of getting hurt or threatened, ever. The psychological impact this has caused will last years. Now, thinking ahead for many, to many more years in the Holden School, what will next year look like? Will Johnny get the help that he needs? Will he come back to the classroom? Are there guns in his home? Will he come back with a vendetta? Is he expelled? Can guns be compensated from his home where an unstable member lives, especially where that unstable member is a minor? What is the parent doing anyway? When is it the village's business? The more I dug, the more disturbed I felt. Every day I learned more and more. At first, I supported the idea of patience and kindness for this new recruit. Special learning needs are no mystery to me, but this was the last straw, a terrifying situation that has made me start researching homeschooling or online learning. Upon further digging with parents and friends, I learned that Johnny has a reputation. He's been hard for years now. How bad is this going to get? My sole job as a parent is to protect them and teach them, point them in the right direction with skills to navigate the dangers. My elementary-age children are trained in active shooter situations at school, trained in it. I'm not even trained in active shooter situations. Never had to. In my lifetime, that was for the military or law enforcement, period. They are students, children, not soldiers. They'll say communities should be able to come together for the common goal. Those are useless and empty words. What common goal? Happiness? Success? Health? Unity? None of the above. I find myself fighting and struggling for our most basic needs every single day. My short and simple inquiries brought into the light the gaps that a single child's school life. The school doesn't talk to the parents. The schools don't provide professionals. The unions don't care about the budget. The doctors don't make the rules and remind me what the school committee does. No congruency whatsoever. No one is getting anywhere. I learned that if a parent privately seeks an evaluation, the student must wait, on average, two to three years for a neuropsychological evaluation, on which most insurance companies don't cover. Cash only, I've learned. Guess how much it is? $5,000 for one student, one preliminary neuropsychological exam. I have two children. Like, I can't imagine what that would be like for two children. Parents actively participating in their child's education, seeking an evaluation to ensure that their child's learning needs are met, go on a two- to three-year waiting list. I repeat, two to three years. So, the reality is a fourth grader will not have their needs met until they reach middle school. Is it right there, in that space, that we cultivate a shooter? Up to three years of teachers holding that student to standards not meant for them? Three years of humiliating situations with peers because there's no professional to buffer it? Three years of teachers being asked to do the work of specialists because there isn't time, funding, or concern yet? How much adversity does that one child suffer in that time? Don't tell me it's just bullying. Every day we hear about school shootings. Stop for a second and think about the sobering, terrifying thought to wonder if your child needs a healthy snack and a bulletproof vest in their backpack. It's commonly accepted that these killers are born during childhood. Deep down, we know what to do. We already know where we went wrong. We just need to be honest with ourselves and cooperate. The school's cursory evaluations don't cut it. Two emails to the principal, two emails to the superintendent, and two phone calls to the superintendent's office, complete silence. I'm being ignored. But why? In this situation, though, the burden is on me. I bear the burden to advocate for my children, and I've carried it through to deaf ears. They won't talk to me. It's all just swept under the rug. How loud do I have to get, Holden? If Johnny can't get the proper evaluation, then I need to know if and when this child is in my daughter's classroom. Sincerely, Heather. I've attached to this, you have a copy of it, of the emails, the communication I tried making to the school and the superintendent, and I also attached a very well-written article with many professionals about school evaluations, or about the neuropsychological evaluations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. We will distribute your materials to all of the people.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to chair's opening remarks, I just wanted to say first, thank you for voting for me as chair. I'm both honored and humbled by the opportunity and the work it's going to take for this year. I'm going to want to thank Sherri for being chair last year, and I think you did a great job, and I really appreciate all the work that you did. Again, welcome to the new members that we have. Also, welcome to the people that were reelected this year. I think after all of the turnover that we've had in the last couple of years in administration and the committee, I'm looking forward to a really good year this year. I see my role as chair, just to start, as serving the committee. They served all kinds of roles in the districts. There were principals, there were teachers, there were paraprofessionals, there were ABAs. All, the one thing that was in common is that they had made a difference in a particular student's life. And I think it's especially powerful when people are nominated by a child's family, because it speaks to the connections that they forged and the good work that they've done. Really, you know, families are going to know best about what their experience has been like for their students. It was especially nice because it was attended not only by some school committee members, but also by our state representative, Senator Goby. Representative Ferguson was there. Was there. Representative Kilcoyne got stuck in Northborough, but she was going to attend as well. But we were also notified by CPAC president this morning that all of the honorary schools are going to be receiving books in honor of the nominees. At the elementary level, there are going to be picture and word books that speak about neurodiversity, so kids can learn about what that means and how all kids kind of learn differently and interacting with the world differently. And then at the middle and high school level, there'll be novels and biographies that look at the stigma that can be caused sometimes when people have disabilities. So a really nice effort by the CPAC, both to recognize people who are working really hard in our district, and then also to increase education and awareness around kids who have different needs. So, thank you to them. It was really, really well-done and nice event. Just congratulations again to our new members. Welcome, Member Poole, Member Winters, and welcome back, Member Kirschenbaum and Member Ottmar. We appreciate your service and welcome. We look forward to working with you in the coming year. Wanted to talk, because what's a school committee meeting without a financial update during the 22, 23 school year? I want to thank Director Michelle Grise. Since our last meeting, Michelle finished our DESI End-of-the-Year Report and then also completed our excess and deficiency for FY '22. That total was certified. We included that in your packet. Our excess and deficiency for this year will be $1,493,879. Our member towns have requested a portion of our excess and deficiency be used to reduce town assessments. We had forwarded a letter from all the communities and then sent along a letter today from Holden that was signed by their select board requesting that you consider that request. I've informed our town managers that I will not be formally making that request tonight, but I will at a future meeting. At this time, I believe I'll be making the presentation and recommendation at the June meeting. Tentatively, we have a June meeting scheduled for June 12th. We had that discussion a bit today in our finance subcommittee, and so there's a possibility that we'll look at a different date, but I think right now, we think it might be in June, I will be meeting with town managers and to look at this issue and to discuss it with them further. Some of the things I'm hoping to bring to the committee is the history of us using excess and deficiency and the history of us supplementing our budget with additional funds. Some needs that we continue to have that have not been brought forward at our town meetings, including some of our capital improvement requests for security measures. And then also, what an appropriation under this may mean. And so you can see all that information, but we want it to be a complete presentation for people to have as much data as possible to make a decision that they feel like they can stand by. On an aside, I do want to thank the towns of Sterling, Rutland, and Holden, who have all passed our budget at this point. We've passed all three communities, which is a wonderful feeling that they're supporting our schools and taking the school committee's recommendation. Hopefully, we'll have a similar experience in Paxton and Princeton in the coming month. But I want to thank all those communities for the support. Want to talk a little bit about our extended-year program and give parents an update about what that work is. I haven't spoken enough about the work Carol Hume, Dana Walton, and Lincoln Waterhouse have done in our special education department, supporting us during a time of transition. You know, we've been out with an active director, even though we did, you know, post for that position, we did not have any candidates. We will have a new special education director beginning July 1st. But in the interim, Carol, Dana, and Lincoln have really done a lot of work to try to make sure that we have sufficient momentum and that kids are still getting services at a time that we're missing a critical position. Families will be receiving notification this week about the extended-year program. They'll also be receiving an additional communication in June that informs them of their transportation. Programming should be discussed at any family's IEP meeting, at those team meetings. Part of that meeting should be a component about whether or not the child is eligible for services in the extended-year program. The two primary reasons they would look at that is to prevent regression of skills and then also based on the individual student needs. So they look at the IEP, and they say, is this a service that the child would benefit from and needs? If a family does not hear or get notification, what we'd ask them to do is to please contact your special education case manager or their school's team chairperson if they have any questions. Just talking a little bit about the program and what it's going to look like. It's anticipated that we're going to support about 340 students from the ages of three to 22. Most of the programming is going to be taking place between July 10th and August 10th. There are some variations depending on the level and depending on the program. I think it's important to know that there's going to be a wealth and different variety of services that are going to be available to these kids. It's specially designed instruction, and there are academic life skills and vocational skills that will be addressed if needed, communication, social-emotional services, finding gross motor skills, and other identified areas that may be of need that are on the child's IEP. The big change this year, and that we want people to be aware of, is there'll be three program locations, the Early Childhood Center, Glenwood Elementary in Rutland, and at the high school. Typically, students who will be attending Glenwood this summer would have attended services at Houghton and Choxit and Sterling. We're going to be doing some work on those schools, on their physical plans this summer, and the decision was made it was best not to have students or teachers in the building while they do that work. We want to be careful with the work that we're doing there. And it made sense, and just honestly, based on the age of the building, that you don't know what you might uncover. So you want to take your time, do the work deliberately, and not expose anybody if you had to do remediation or anything in the school. We do not think that's going to be necessary, but we do want to make sure that we're taking any steps to make sure we take care of our staff and our kids. So that's why we're going with this summer. And we think, in, you know, discussions we've had with Dana, who really is kind of heading up and spearheading this effort, Glenwood's going to be a good location, just the size of the building, the classrooms that they have. And we have a high-level confidence that it's going to be a good experience for everyone. Building use and population update. I requested that this be part of the superintendent's report, because I think the meeting we have in June, I would plan on sharing my entry findings over the past year, kind of setting the stage for moving into strategic planning moving forward. And this was just a really important subject, I believe, that I wanted to introduce to the committee, and we've talked a little bit about. But to me, it's going to be one of our greatest needs moving forward. There's a sense of urgency around this, I'd share. You know, we are going to have schools that if the budget passes and we're moving forward with our plans, we're going to be adding additional teachers in some of our schools. And while those teachers have classrooms, it's going to impact some of the services that some of those children get. You know, we may have to have situations where we're offering specials like art or music on a cart, and that isn't something that we want to provide to our kids. That becomes an equity issue, where kids are having different experiences, because they can't have the same programming that they might have in another school. And so when I talk about our need to look at our space, it really is something that's immediate, but it's also long-term. I think we're all aware that there's a building that is going to be happening in both Rutland and Holden, and that we have to be prepared if we need to either expand or possibly build new schools. And we have to get a sense of what that really is going to be, what that's going to mean. You know, their estimates are between 100. In some cases, I believe it could be up to 400 additional units be added in some of these towns. And when it takes seven years to build a school building, we need to get ahead of this. I'd say that we're already a little bit behind the game. And so that's one of the needs for the urgency behind this. I'd also say it's something that we're hoping to build into our strategic plan. And then when you look at our other communities, Princeton, Paxton, Sterling, they may be having the opposite problem, okay? We want to be looking to make sure that those schools, right now, K-8 in Paxton, Princeton, those schools are at a level that they can continue to sustain the programming that they have. We don't want to be at a point where, you know, we're worried about, you know, having a class size of, you know, 28, because we don't want to have two classes of 14. It's in all of our best interests that our schools are maximized in terms of the resources and opportunities they can offer everybody. And so one of the things I'd share is it'd be important for us to look at, should we be looking at something like intra-district school choice, where if we're not able to build a building right away, is there an opportunity for families to perhaps look at a school in another town and get programming there? And that would impact things like our transportation contract, and our transportation contract is up next year. And so these are things that we want to think about as we move forward and grow our district, because we're going to be dealing with different problems in different communities. But overall, it's important that we think this through and have some strategy to address it. We've already taken a couple of meetings just to look at how we could address this issue. We've met with NESDEC, that does a lot of our population studies. A lot of times, they inform the class-size recommendations that you get, but they can go even deeper and look at building permits and other things. And we've talked to them about what that might look like, and starting to get proposals from them. We've also gotten a proposal from the Collins Center at UMass Boston. They do a lot of policy and programming, and they have another program that they could come in and do a study for us. So we've already gotten those proposals, and we'll be sharing them with you in the future. But for our next steps, I did speak about this at our town manager meeting, because it's important to have town buy-in. And like, we need to make sure that they're on board with what our approach to population studies, because ultimately, we're going to need the towns to be in support if we recommend another school or an addition to school, or, you know, potentially looking at school choice. So they're an important part of this, and we want to make sure that they're active in the process with us and approve of the way we're going about this. We'll be looking at the proposals and making a recommendation. And then lastly, we're thinking about creating a committee. And we view the committee probably not just a school committee, ad hoc committee, but more of a committee that could involve community members, okay? And so not only citizens, but towns, town officials, and really kind of get our arms around all this, because it really is going to be one of the big things we need to look at in the next couple of years. And the sooner we get started, the better. And so at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions or have further discussions as the chair.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Okay. I'm just wondering, with the proposals you received, is that something that the school committee will need to vote on, or that you will be bringing to business and finance to discuss the cost of those studies since they weren't in our original plan? Or is it something you guys just will be deciding and bringing to, notifying us, keeping us in the loop?
So this is our entry into letting you know the work we're doing behind the scenes. I do see school committee involvement. You know, to be honest, we haven't wrapped our arms around this a lot. You know, one of the things about the Collins Center is it's a much higher estimate in terms of the cost, but they also offer grant help where it defrays a lot of the cost, you know, and so overall, it may be less. However, their timeline is also much greater. I think one of the things to answer your question, I would like to bring back to the full committee, is conversations with the towns, with the town managers to take a look at how we're approaching this. I think what we don't want to do is embark on this work, make a recommendation, and the towns say, well, we don't think you looked at this the way we would have recommended. Like, it's really important that we've got some synergy around this, and that we're all viewing it as, look, we're going to be solution-focused, we're all headed in the same direction, we all want the same thing here, and we're all agreeing about this process. And so I see bringing it back to the full committee, and then honestly, perhaps that, I don't know what kind of the advisory board, or I'm trying to think what we would even call it, you know, and presenting that information and then bringing it forward. I would say, yes, it's not something that we have put in or built into the budget. I think it's something that, you know, we were aware and spoke about, you know, space issues in our school, but I think even our understanding of the level of building that's possible in a couple of our communities has caught us off-guard. And I think that it's, that's when it really started to resonate, that we have to do some serious work and planning around this. And so my intent, when I brought it forward tonight, is just to let you know, look, we're gathering this information, we're not prepared to make a recommendation, but when we are, we definitely will share all of that information. Because again, we want the school committee to believe in the work, we want the towns to believe in the work, and we want the citizens behind it, because, you know, there'd be major resources that may be extended, and it could change our approach to how we, you know, look at schooling in the district. You know, it could also be part, I don't want to get ahead of myself, you know, but do we look in the strategic plan about identifying schools that may, just like Thomas Prince, right? A couple of years ago, Thomas Prince was struggling to get students, you know? It's an excellent school, and it has us them focused. And so should we be looking at that in some of our other schools? I think some of our residents may look at a K-8 school as a nice community model and something that they may want to look towards. So still really early in the process, but I think important to get out there, both to our towns, but also to the school committee, that this is an issue we've got to be ready to tackle. And it's important now. And so that was the point for me, really, just to talk about it tonight.
Thank you.
Got it.
Laura?
Thank you. I would just like to state again how thankful I am for business and finance director Michelle for doing such great work this year to try to dig us out of the black hole of paperwork and so forth. So I appreciate all the work that you did to get that done, the year-end report, and it's great to hear that the excess and deficiencies is in the positive. I know that at the beginning of this year, it was, it looked really bleak, and everybody was really caught off-guard. And so I'm glad that when all is said and done, that we're really on the other side of that. And so I want to thank you again for the work that you've done to get us where we are.
Yes.
So I just wanted to ask about the, with looking forward for buildings, if the ECC and our pre-K offerings are part of the plans of what will be examined?
Yeah, so great question. You know, I've had conversations with Andrea just about developing our vision in terms of what do we want to do in early childhood. I think long-term, if I'm honest with you, unless there's a major overhaul to that building and somehow we have to find additional space, especially if we're expanding our footprint. And, you know, right now, I think we're 6,800 students in the district. I gotta think we're going to be over 7,000 again very soon. You know, and then it looks to the point of, and I'm, you know, don't get me on early childhood, like, I'll talk all day to you. You know, to me, the most, one of the most critical opportunities you could have to support a child, the gains that they make if you have early intervention and give the right services to kids are absolutely amazing. You know, I think it's the approach we should be taking in education. You intervene when you need to and provide support, because you may not need to support later. And we all know that the more we can make sure a child is included in all services and opportunities, the more likelihood they're going to feel like they're part and they belong, right, in their school. So really important. And I think part of that, to be honest with you, is probably we need to look at the ability to expand that program's operation. One of the things we don't have, and Andrea did a real nice presentation, I think, to the full committee earlier this year. And, you know, one of the things I'd share with you is, right now, we really don't have distinct full-day programming for some of our students. We kind of take a half-day model, and, you know, the kids do it twice, almost not, it's not the same content and things like that. I don't want to make it seem like they're not getting benefit from it. They are. But a district our size, you know, do I feel like we should have a distinct full-day option? Yeah, that's something I'd like to look at us being able to do. And I would say it's another item that we need to look at when we're strategic planning, is, you know, what is our approach to intervention, early childhood, and all those things? And potentially, what comes out of that is we may need to look at, you know, another building, or another way, or another approach to where we provide services to those kids. So one of the nice things about the studies that we've looked at so far with both NESDEC and Collins is not only would they try to project for us what our potential population changes would be, they would also look at our facilities and look at, it's almost like, I'm trying to think what they call it. It's like a building use assessment, you know what I mean? And so like, this is what this building's true capacity is, this is what we would want to see it as. And so, you know, a lot of moving parts. And then who knows? If we're looking at particular areas and we're looking at intra-district things, does it free up a building? Or is there a building built somewhere, and then that physical footprint opens up? I'm not sure. But yeah, I'd say it's a valid point that we need to be prepared to look at that as well. Got it?
That's true. Any other questions for Dr. Riley? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to the next item on the agenda, recommendations requiring action by the school committee. And the first thing is to enter into an executive session to discuss strategy for contract negotiations with all bargaining units, as the chair deems a discussion in public session would have an adverse effect on the district's bargaining position. We will return to public session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have Sue on the line, so we will go to a roll call vote. Randy, will you please call the roll?
Member Brennen?
Yes.
Member Dubois?
Yes.
Member Varden?
Yes.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Duskis?
Yes.
Member Kirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Kminsky?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Stanley Garrett?
Yes.
Member Longfuley?
Yes.
Member Winter?
Yes.
Member Woodson?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
And Sheron Strum?
I'm staying. The motion passes, I believe. We are in executive session. All right, we're going to come back into public session here and continue the agenda All right, we're going to come back into public session here and continue the agenda for the meeting. All right. So we'll be up to recommendations requiring action by the school committee. And the motion number two, I would accept a motion to approve Superintendent Riley's vacation carryover based on policy 5290, policy related to personnel management, superintendent and executive staff vacation policy. Here, second?
Second.
Second by Jana. So moved by Linda, seconded by Jana and others. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will move to a roll call vote. Randy, will you please call the roll?
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member DeBarden?
Yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Yes. Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Pirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Longboule?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sammy Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundstrom?
The chair abstains. I believe the motion passes. All right. Moving on, the next thing on the agenda is to discuss the school committee meeting schedule for next year. As you've noticed, there are two copies of the schedule here. There have been some changes from what was sent out in your packet. So I believe what would make sense for today is that we approve our next scheduled meeting and then discuss the schedule for the rest of the year, take suggestions about anything you'd like to see changed, and then we'll come back at our next meeting and vote the remainder of the schedule for the year based on those suggestions. So I would entertain a motion to schedule our next meeting for June 12th.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Linda, seconded by Kumara.
I'm sorry, give me one second.
Yep, no problem.
Will they always be at seven o'clock?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, who first and second is that?
I moved that.
Linda Woodland and Kumara, seconded. All right. So any discussion on the school calendar? Member Kaminsky.
Thank you. I would like to propose a certain change in the procedure. Well, actually, I was just talking about the next date first or?
So we're going to vote on the next date, but I open discussion for the entire calendar. So if anyone has a suggestion for the whole year, now is the time to make your suggestion. We'll try and put a calendar together for our next meeting and vote on the rest of the calendar.
Okay, thank you. So really, I'd like to propose certain change in the procedure. The calendar is formed, and the change in the procedure would be to poll all the committee members as to what would be their preferred days of the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then, given the percentage of the responses, the schedule would be formed with the same percentage of the days. Let's say 40% of members prefer Mondays, so then 40% of meetings are Mondays. 20% prefer Tuesdays, 20% of the meetings would be Tuesdays. The rationale for this would be to make sure it's an equitable and, you know, fair procedure and the general schedules of all the members of the committee would be taken to the call. Thank you.
Any other questions, suggestions? Let's see, Member Gustafson next.
Sorry. I have, I had a question, well, maybe two questions. The first is about a specific date. I was looking at the February date and wondered why it is, the second one is the 29th instead of the Monday, the 26th. So that was a question. Originally, I think it was the 27th, but regardless, it's now the 29th instead of the Monday, the 26th?
It was, the 27th was the wrong day to begin with. It would have been the 26th, it would have been a Monday.
Right. It's not a holiday.
Right. So that was just a typo. The, the 29th was then chosen secondarily because it would be a date that would also possibly work for the budget hearing.
Okay.
Time wise with getting?
Depending on how we do all that, so.
Right, submitting for the warrant for the budget.
So it may be subject to a change, but that's why, okay.
That is why it was changed.
Okay, thank you. My other question is one that I bring up every year, and I don't know if we can know the answer yet, but have we checked this with the town meeting schedules and reached out to them? Because they don't set their schedules in most cases until summer, honestly. But I know that in some years in the past, we have had a conflict specifically with Holden being on the exact same meeting week as we are every time. They meet every other week. And if they're on the exact same week as we are every time, it makes it really challenging to have open communication. If they have anything related to the school committee on their agenda, we can't go. If we want them to come to anything or discuss anything, it makes it difficult to do that when we're meeting at the exact same time. So it doesn't, so I just want to make that note and see if there's any way we can check with their new chair to make sure that we are not consistently on one of their regular meeting weeks this year. I know, you know, they're the first and third or second and fourth, and I don't know how to decide that, but I don't want to raise that. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Member Kaminsky.
So actually, if we move at least some meetings on Tuesdays, the probability of them coinciding with the town meetings would be lower.
Member Woodland.
I mean, I would just offer that we can forward whatever is approved to the towns. And then they would know, since we said ours before, they would know what we're, when we're meeting. And I'd also just like to point out that there is some value in having, in knowing that it's always a Monday, just like how we know the select board in Holden is always a Monday, the select board in Sterling is always a Wednesday. There's a value in that, not, not for us at this table, but for the public to know when to show up and when to pay attention.
Yes.
So then would there be value to have it on Tuesday and have it be every Tuesday versus every Monday if you know that the Holden meetings are on Monday, Sterling meetings are on Wednesday, et cetera?
I looked into this once. There was only one day, I think it was Thursdays was the only day that there wasn't any town, that any of the towns didn't have regular meetings on those days.
Questioning the need for the two January meetings. I went through the past two years of agendas, and although they had a lot of content, I didn't see any reason to have two meetings in January, especially because we will additionally then have a special meeting for the budget retreat. So I would suggest removing one of them.
Can I speak again? Okay. I appreciated having two in January because there's often a lot of budget things we want to discuss and other things that we don't quite get to in December because of holidays and things. And with all of the time that we lose after that big break, there's often a lot of things that we want to get into. And I think it's easier to take something off the meeting schedule later if we think we won't need it than to try to scramble to add a special meeting that we don't know about.
Thank you. Any additional input? All right. So thank you for those suggestions. There's a lot of good suggestions. I think the administration and myself will look at the calendar and try and put together something that, yeah. All right. So if there's no further discussions, we would move on to the, to voting on the motion on the table, which is simply to approve the June meeting. So the motion's already been made, so we can call, roll call vote, Randy.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member DeBarden?
Ah, yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Pirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Longboule?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sammy Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundstrom?
The chair abstains. All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much. I'll see you all in June. All right, the next item on the agenda is I would accept a motion to ratify the contract between the Massachusetts Regional School District and the Massachusetts Administrators Association.
So moved?
Second.
That was moved by Lauren and seconded by Kumara. Any discussion? Well, we have no discussion because this was executive session. So we'll move directly to a roll call vote.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member DeBarden?
Yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Pirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Longboule?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sammy Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Minister Paul Brett Whitman?
Whitman, yes.
Whitman.
Whitman.
Chair Rundstrom?
The chair abstains. The motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda, I would accept a motion to accept the resolution for Massachusetts School Building Authority as revised for submission by MASC. And Member Woodland would like to explain this.
Do I explain it before moving it?
You should have a motion first. You are correct.
So moved.
So I'd accept a motion. Moved by, I hear second, seconded by Member Haber.
So as some of you who were here last time, last meeting know, we passed a resolution regarding the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and that was sent to our state delegation. And our towns were also asked to write a letter of support mirroring these points that we resolved that the state should fix. And I'm very thankful to the town of Rutland that has already sent a letter of support as well, and hopefully the other four towns will follow suit. This, what we're talking about tonight, though, is a slight revision, and this is to make use of our professional association, MASC. So they have a resolutions committee, and they put together resolutions that would go forward to the state with the full support of their organization and the entire state of Massachusetts school committees. What they require, though, that were some wording changes where instead of the Massachusetts Regional School District is resolved to, you know, to make these changes in the state level, we had to make it to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So those are the changes that have, that were made within. If it is selected by the resolution committee, then it would go before the delegate assembly in November at the MASC conference, which member Sammy Garrett and member Valentine were our delegates last year. It would get workshopped and potentially passed to go to the state. And then the other avenue is if there are five other school committees in the state who also pass this, then it would automatically go to that November meeting. And so at this time, would it make sense for me to read the resolution as revised?
Yes, please.
Whereas the School Building Assistance Program is the oldest capital grant program operated by the Commonwealth as established by MGL Chapter 70B, Section 1. Whereas the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, is charged to promote the thoughtful planning and construction of school facility space in order to ensure safe and adequate facilities for public schools and to assist towns in meeting the costs thereof. Whereas the MSBA has improved the learning facilities of over 600,000 students across the Commonwealth by working with local communities to create affordable, sustainable, and energy efficient schools. Whereas the MSBA is limited in funding as stated in MGL 70B, Section 7, to $800 million plus either the rate of growth and a dedicated sales tax revenue amount as defined in subsection A of Section 35BB of Chapter 10, or 4.5%. Whereas the MSBA has declared a pause on their accelerated repair program and limits on their core projects due to rising costs and inflation and the need to stay within the annual cap as referenced in the memorandum of October 19th, 2022 from MSBA Deputy Treasurer and Executive Director. Whereas each year the accelerated repair program is delayed causes an increase in application backlog among the Commonwealth's existing backlog of school building needs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts legislator, legislature to amend MGL 70B, Section 7 by removing the $800 million cap and be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts School Building Authority to reinstate the accelerated repair program for 2024 applications and be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to allow public preschools to be included in the accelerated repair program and core program. And just to add to this, you know, the MSBA is part of what allows towns to build new buildings and also repair things like roofs, windows, boilers. There are nine schools in our district that could potentially qualify for one of those programs, one of those repairs that was paused this year. We are not alone in that being a problem. That's statewide. So my hope is that if we can, this is another avenue to bring that state recognition to try to solve this problem. And another note, too, is that we have also received some word from Representative Ferguson regarding this issue as a result of the resolution we already sent her way. And so if there are any other questions?
Yep. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes.
I really appreciate this level of statewide advocacy. We all know we're the largest regional school district in the state, and when we feel problems, many other districts are feeling the same problems. So I think this type of statewide advocacy is something I've been wanting to see for a very long time, and I appreciate this work being done to bring this to MASC.
Member Haber.
Right. Anyone like to hear the update from Representative Ferguson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we just got it yesterday. She said, thank you for sending this along. I apologize for the delay, but Senator Gobi and I wanted to check on a few things pertaining to this. At this point, there are several bills which were filed in January regarding the SBA process and funding. No action has been taken as of yet. We will certainly be looking for the hearing dates on these bills. Also, four amendments were filed regarding the SBA as part of the House budget process, but unfortunately, no action was taken on them during budget week. There was one outside section added as part of the House plan which reads, Section 17, MSBA grants, this section increases the yearly limit to grants approved by the MSBA to 300 million, from, by $300 million to $1.1 billion. As you know, the budget has now to move through the Senate and through the Conference Committee before being finalized, and the Senate will be debating their budget next week. Thank you again for sending us the resolution, and we will be monitoring any changes pertaining to SBA as well as the hearing dates. Representative Ferguson.
That's great. Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the table to accept the resolution to be submitted to MASC correctly? Correct? Yes. All right. So Randy, could you call the roll, please?
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member DeBarden?
Yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Abstained.
Member Pirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Longboule?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sammy Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundstrom?
The chair abstains. Looks like the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to the secretary's report. Oh, unfinished business first, but I don't believe we have any unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, unfinished business. So we're moving on to the secretary's report. The first item there is the consent agenda. So I will entertain a motion to consent agenda to approve the executive session minutes of April 27th, 2023, and the regular session minutes of April 27th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Kumara and Member Woodland? Hey, it's a consent agenda, so there's no discussion. So.
Member Beardmore?
Oh, right. Hold on one second. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? So now we can move to a roll call.
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member DeBarden?
Yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Abstained.
Member Pirschenbaum?
Yes.
Member Longboule?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sammy Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundstrom?
The chair abstains. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, and next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report, financial statement. We do not have a treasurer's report, financial statement. This is something that we would like to resume. We are hopeful that as the cash books get reconciled, if I said that correctly, that we will be able to resume the treasurer's report starting in July. All right, moving on to committee reports. Most of the committees, subcommittees are currently not active. However, if any subcommittees have met since the last meeting, please let me know. So we'll start with business and finance, which is meeting.
Yes, business and finance is meeting because we are the only subcommittee still constituted officially. And we did have a meeting this evening before this meeting. The main item on the agenda was discussing the district E and D, excess and deficiency. We, we wish we had more time. We, I would say, we don't, we did not have a specific proposal to consider because we're not there yet, but we did discuss the not there yet, but we did discuss the process that has been certified. We have received some letters from the towns as, you know, to the district, which I think were in the report, requesting a portion of that money we returned to them. We discussed some of the factors that will be considered in that process and some of the data that we will, administration will gather and bring to us at a future meeting. And we did have some discussion of the timing of that meeting, but it was not determined because it really depends on a number of factors that we don't know yet, and we'll have particular pieces of information. I think it was a really great discussion. I thank the members of my subcommittee for coming, you know, whenever, you know, coming extra before this meeting. And I will, well, if we have reason to meet before June and we don't have our subcommittees yet, then I will convene another meeting as chair. If I am, there is a different chair, I will share with that the information that came out of this meeting, certainly. So I think it was a good discussion. There's not a specific proposal to be considered at this point in time, but I think we're on the right track to, to do that, and we were able to ask some questions that will help inform that discussion, so.
Thank you, Mila. Any questions? So it looks like Legal Affairs does have an item on the agenda for the second reading of the policy?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I...
Do you want me to read it, Lauren?
What?
Would you like me to read it?
We just have to make the motion, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to amend policy, 1520, policy relating to operations, policy development, second reading, meaning the reading.
Second.
So it was moved by Lauren. I heard Linda Woodland seconded first, although it was several people. All right, so we can move to a roll call vote to approve...
We want to explain to the new members.
That's a good idea, Lauren. Yes, please, please explain what this is before we vote on it, yes.
This is a very, this is a basic policy about how we amend and review policies and create policies. And basically, we simply, we had legal counsel look at it to add the meaning of majority vote since we were moving to weighted voting for the near future. So it was kind of a simple change.
And what was it before?
It was, it just said, majority, this, this defines what majority is.
Okay, I got you, okay.
With proportional voting. And then it also added the word affirm, because before it just said may adopt, change, or revoke. And now, because we like to review our policies, we added the word affirm, if they were not being changed at all.
This was talked about in the last meeting.
Yep, yeah, we did it first reading. We have, that's part of the policy, is there's two separate readings. We vote on policies twice.
And just again for the new members, typically, this is something, to avoid reading pages of policy in the meetings, we'll waive the reading, but they're always provided in the packets ahead of time so that you can read it and ask any questions.
Okay.
Any further questions on the policy change? All right, so we'll move to a roll call vote. Randy?
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member Biden?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Perssonbaum?
Yes.
Member Longbulio?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundström?
The chair abstains, and the motion passes. All right, are there, so instead of calling each subcommittee, because I expect most of them haven't met because they don't exist currently, are there any other former subcommittee chairs that would like to have a report out on a meeting that's happened since our last meeting? All right, I don't see any. So either, we'll move on to school council reports. So does anyone have a report from their school council? Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you. I think I mentioned this in our, in my last meeting about the Mountview Middle School parent feedback survey that had been put out, and I think at the time I had said that it had closed. But after the SimCo met and reviewed the data, because of the low response rate, I think there were only like 150 members who had, parents who had responded, they actually elected to reopen the survey, and I believe that is still open. So for those parents that are out there, check your emails. Mountview Middle School is looking for your feedback. This is crucial as they work to hear what people are saying and, and make, make changes, make improvements, and continue to serve the children. So thank you.
Thank you. So member Gassipson, next.
Yep. It's not really school council, but that's where it sits in the agenda for now. I wanted to just report out for, on CPAC. As the superintendent noted, there, there was an event last evening to celebrate those people who have helped our students greatly in the community. There were 75 nominees this year for Wind Beneath Their Wings. We actually had a fantastic turnout. There were, I think, only maybe, I think, 65 people that showed up of the nominees, which is unheard of. It's amazing. We had, as, as the superintendent said, he attended, Assistant Superintendent Daly was there as well, so I appreciate that. There were two principals recognized, staff from throughout the district. I talked to staff from every school, or every city at least, not every school, but that do all sorts of things, everything from paras, all bus drivers, all the way up to, as you said, principals, which is amazing. And I know that in a typical year, there's also a couple people in the community that make a difference in their lives as well. So it really is a celebration. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. Also, the, one of the outgoing chairs of CPAC was recognized as well, Melissa Martin, for 14 years of service with CPAC. And it was just a great turnout. We had a speaker that was fantastic. People stayed and talked for quite a while. It's really a very inspiring event. Also, they did send me this about the books that they donated. They said, "In honor of the award recipients, CPAC purchased age-appropriate children books and novels for all WRSD schools. They selected children's picture books that celebrate neurodiversity and encourage children to value the difference in all of us. For middle school and high schools, they selected a novel and biography that aimed to break the stigma around disabilities." They actually meant to include that in their speech last night, and they forgot. So has me to read that as well. It's, it was just a great event, and I, I love it. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. So if any of you do have a chance to attend in the future, it's open to anyone in our school community to attend. They don't have a next meeting date, but they will be having a meeting. Usually, they have one in May or early June where they have to elect their officers for the next year and formally have that transition. So I, I don't know the date of that yet, but I will share it if it's after our next meeting, if it's before our next meeting, it will be shared in email in some way or shape or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Longbulio?
The high school SimCo met on May 9, and we discussed the preliminary results of a parent survey. And the two issues that really stood out from that discussion were vaping. There were quite a few parent concerns raised about vaping. A very challenging problem, and we discussed how, how difficult it can be to address that and different ideas for doing that, addressing it. And then also bullying. And it, the results showed that although four out of five students say they have not, or parents report no bullying of their children, that slightly, slightly less than one in five report some sort of bullying incident, including one racial incident. So an ongoing concern as well. There were lots of other issues, very interesting, interesting data, and looking forward to the full report when it's done. I'm not sure when it closes, actually. I can hopefully find out, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Brennan?
So Davis Hill SimCo has not met since last time I was here, but I just wanted to give some Davis Hill updates and things that are going on. Davis Hill is really great about holding a lot of community events and traditions that the students love, and one of them that happened recently is the fifth grade versus teachers' basketball game that commences every year. I believe this might be the first one since COVID. They may did it last year, I can't remember. But it's a really great day. The whole school comes and watches, and the students play, teachers who volunteer to be on the teacher team. And even the administration gets in on it, and it's just a wonderful day, and the kids really love it. We also have a, a feedback survey that is open till May 22, so any Davis Hill parents, if you could fill that out by May 22, that would be great. We'd really love your feedback. MCAS is in full swing as well at Davis Hill. And that is, I think, pretty much... Oh, so, yeah, the playground. So they're looking to form a playground committee at Davis Hill if anyone is interested in joining the playground to make, committee to look into the future of the playgrounds at Davis Hill. We've discussed before that they are in disrepair and they are old. So besides funding issues, I think Mr. Norton would like to form a committee in order to best think about what we would like those playgrounds to look like, what's the best way that they can be utilized by the students. So there is a committee forming for that if you are interested in, in joining that. There is a first meeting tomorrow night, and you can contact Mr. Norton if you would like to join that as well. And also tomorrow is the fourth grade Wax Museum, which is another very popular event. It's really great. Each student in fourth grade picks a person in history, and then, you know, they stand there like a wax museum, and you can press a button, and they'll give you like a minute speech about them, and they dress like them, and they have posters and the whole thing. The community loves it, the kids love it, so it's another great tradition happening at Davis Hill. So everyone's very busy.
Thank you. Member Beardmore?
The Glenwood SimCo met May 10. It hit on very similar things. MCAS are moving forward. Talked about really COVID still having an impact this past year on teachers, lack of substitutes, paraprofessionals being maxed out, things of that nature. There's still some facility issues at Glenwood that we'd like to follow up on, too, especially with summer school coming up. That's basically it.
Yep.
The May meeting of the student council at Thomas Prince School was canceled due to a budgeting conflict.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to add that there were, in addition to the concerns I mentioned, there was a lot of positive feedback about the education the kids are receiving at the high school, the atmosphere, et cetera. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you.
This is not SimCo related, but it does have to do with our district and schools, so if you would provide, allow me some latitude on this. I just wanted to say that I was, I heard recently that Sierra Kelsch won first prize at the state science fair.
Yes.
And that, that is a huge accomplishment. She's a freshman in our, in our programming here at the high school, and I just want to give a shout out to her. Also, the youth, Worcester area Youth Orchestra had their season finale. I know that there's a number of students from our district, both in the strings and in the, in the various instruments beyond the orchestra. Did a fabulous job. I actually attended that concert. It was fabulous. Happened downtown Worcester. And then also, I understand that the high school recently had, I was not able to attend, but there was an art show, and some students won, won some awards for their, their artwork. So it's amazing to see students engaged in academic endeavors where they're acknowledged by the state as also in the arts in our programming that we have here. So a shout out to all those students that are actively engaged in killing it out there. Thank you.
Great stuff. Thank you. All right, anybody else? For the record, Paxton Center School SimCo did meet today, earlier today, and we, they finalized the, the goals of the, the school improvement plan. All right, so moving on to the second, oh, yes.
Can I just ask a general question about the way that this works? Because that's one of the questions that I have to fill out. So how do we know who, like what schools need one?
Ah, okay, so, so right now, no one's assigned to any, right? So it's sort of all schools need someone to volunteer. We really try and go by volunteers, so a lot of times, people will volunteer for the school if they have a child at the school, or they feel an attachment to the school in some way. But we do try and cover each of the schools. So if you're interested in a school that you're interested in, I'm sure we'd be happy to have you, have you attend.
So is there usually one per?
I think so. I don't know if there's any restriction on that. Anything else you'd like to say?
There's policy. There's policy about it, and it is one per, and we are required to have a school committee member. You act as an ex-officio member. You are not allowed to vote, but you participate in every meeting and discussion. Okay, thank you.
It is interesting. It's a good way to hear what's happening in the schools and meet some of the, meet the principal and some of the teachers and the other parents. So I've, I've actually really enjoyed doing the Paxton.
I have, too.
Enjoy it, yes.
It's been huge.
And as being the person last year who had to decide who was who, I highly recommend that if you have a kid in third grade at Glenwood and you want to be there, write that you have a third kid in third grade at Glenwood.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a second public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up for a public hearing? No. So moving on, next item is new business. So new business? Does anyone have any new business? Member Kaminsky?
So while we heard some heartbreaking testimony at the beginning of this meeting, and it happens time to time that parents or concerned citizens speak during a public hearing, it would be great to discuss how we could make sure that there is a proper response from the administration, potential from the school committee, when there are actually specific actionable items. I don't know, maybe there should be a standing committee that would deal with, like liaison with concerned parents or some other mechanism. So it would be great if we could discuss this at some point.
Okay. Just again, for new members, new business is a place to introduce topics that will be discussed at a future meeting. Since it wasn't on the agenda, we can't have discussion about new business today, but it's something we'll consider for inclusion on a future agenda. All right, any other new business? All right, that brings us to adjournment. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Randy, would you call the roll call, please?
Member Beardmore?
Yes.
Member Brennan?
Yes.
Member DuBois?
Yes.
Member Biden?
Yes.
Member Gassipson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Perssonbaum?
Yes.
Member Longbulio?
Yes.
Member Poole?
Yes.
Member Sam Garrett?
Yes.
Member Valentine?
Yes.
Member Winters?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Chair Rundström?
The chair votes yes. We adjourned.